Right now that are watching Lord God they're safe and we just thank you for everything that you're doing in the lives of your people and the lives of this church. Lord God, we ask that you bless this Bible study allow the knowledge and the information to go forth and a way to be blessed into everyone that's watching, whether on Facebook or on Zoom or in person. So Lord, let your will be done, your will, nothing more, nothing less and nothing else. In Jesus' name. Alright, so first thing we gonna do is I said a couple of weeks ago that we're gonna close out with a couple of skits. So, um, one of, come on Benji. The first kid we gonna do is the bad way to evangelize. So it's designed to be funny, this is for entertainment purposes only. So please don't be sending Deacon Aaron any text messages for, for what is talked about in the next couple of minutes. After that then Minister Moten and Minister Call were gonna come and show you one of the right ways to evangelize. So with that being said, I am going to be the person doing things in the wrong way. Like I said, this is, this is designed to be funny. Hey, how's it going today? Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Well, I guess so.
There's some questions about Jesus and church and stuff like that. Just a couple of minutes. First of all, do you know who Jesus is?
Yes, I'd like to say I know who Jesus is.
When was the last time you went to church?
Sunday.
You was there Sunday?
Yes, I was.
Okay, what was it? You don't go every Sunday? A sinner? So you was there last week, do you remember what the sermon was about?
I sure do.
You know what the title was and so you had to pay attention?
I did.
When was the last time you said a curse word? Professional customer.
The numbers wasn't right this morning.
Have you had any alcohol recently?
Well, I have a drink or two now again.
Do you think you're going to hell? You don't think you're going to hell? Just humor me for a couple more. So based on your answers, I have some news for you. You're probably going to hell. But if you sign this contract that I have right here saying that you love Jesus and accept him as your Savior and then refer me to 10 of your friends and share this on your social media page, you can probably make it to heaven and also receive this special gift I have for you. It's a great, great, special gift. It's, hmm, this gift, it's miracle spring water from the well of this Samaritan woman that Jesus saw on the side of the road. It's real special.
Really?
Yeah, you might go to heaven because of it.
But I won't go to hell?
Can't say that. Special spring water. It'll heal you. It'll quench your thirst. You sure you don't want this, Benji? It's special here from spring water. They talk about it on TV, on BET around 3:00 AM. Uh, you still might go to hell, but at least your thirst will be quenched. But also I wanted to invite you to my church. We have service every day from 5:05 to 5:15. You're welcome to come anytime. We're always looking for new sinners to get saved and ensure that you won't go to hell like everybody else.
Where this church at?
Well, this church, we, uh, travel around, but the name of the church, again, my name is David and the church is Church on the Rock on the Side of the Road, Three Corners with Jesus, Baptist Pentecostal Life-Giving Church of God.
How long have y'all been in?
Well, we just opened last week. Alright, well, praise the Lord. May God bless you and I hope that you don't make it to hell. God bless you. Look forward to seeing you at one of our services. Alright, so that's the wrong way to evangelize. So this was designed to be funny. So after Randy and Jared come back, then we're gonna talk about what I did wrong and what they did right. So now this is one of the right ways to evangelize.
Hi, Joey, come on in.
Do you have a minute?
Sure, what do you need?
I was hoping that you have given this for us to talk.
Okay, what's on your mind?
I've been having a really hard time lately. I know you probably heard that I lost my brother recently.
So sorry to hear that.
Yeah, and I'm just really having a hard time and I see you a lot, you know, in the office and, you know, I know you go to, I heard of the Great Church in Chester. And I was hoping if you had a few minutes, maybe we could, maybe we could talk.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm glad that you were seeing that about me. I love to talk about the Lord. First, I want to know a little bit more about what's going on with you.
Yeah, it's just really been a hard time for my family. You know, we don't go to church often. My grandparents did, but, you know, not family-wide. And then losing my uncle, you know, it's been really frustrating. You know, a lot of people showed up and they, they said they were gonna be there, but now I'm finding nobody's there. You know, bill collectors are showing up and, you know, bills are coming, medical bills are showing up and it's just really hard. And I just don't know what to do for myself or my family. And I really don't know who to turn to right now.
That's tough. Let me tell you, I, as an example, I went through something similar about a year ago and I found that prayer really helped me a lot. But I don't know, have you considered prayer with you and your family?
I mean...
Or do you have a personal relationship with Jesus Christ?
Like I said, my grandparents, my grandparents do, but they never, they never really wished for us to go to church. And when my uncle passed, you know, I did enjoy the service, but it wasn't really that, they didn't get that great feeling overall when I came into the church. But the pastor, you know, he was really good, but, you know, nobody really made me feel really welcome when I came into church. And I almost felt like they were just doing a duty, doing a service.
Okay, I get that. And it would give me great pleasure to tell you a little bit about what gets me through and why I can survive such times as these. And I would love to be able to tell you a little bit about why I can get through times like this. And I wanted to tell you that it's because of my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. He has brought me from a mighty long way. I think he could help you too.
You think so?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that, that, I mean, I, you know, I remember being a teenager and I heard those very words in the church. But it wasn't sincere.
Yeah, sometimes people will make that declaration, but they don't live the life and they don't tap into what the Lord has to offer. And I'd just like to offer you the opportunity to hear more. Our pastor is very good and I think he could help. He does counseling. I think we need someone to talk to. I, I would like the opportunity to tell you a little bit more about Jesus, that he can help you. And I would love for you to go with me to our church or come on your own, bring someone that you'd like, and then we can talk more about it. But anytime you feel like you need someone to speak with, please go. I'm more than happy to share with you about what the Lord Jesus has done for me. He's given me joy, he's given me happiness, and he's given me a foundation. I'm hoping he'll do that same thing for you.
Yeah, I don't feel a lot of joy right now. You know, some mornings I wake up and I'm just downright angry because, you know, my brother was a good man, a good husband, a good father, you know, and I'm like, why? Why did, why did he have to be taken when there's so many people out here that's doing so much wrong and so much violence and crime? You know, why take such a good man? So it's hard for me to wrap my mind around, you know, Jesus in this moment. And how do I, I talk to my siblings and, you know, and everybody's looking to me because it's like, you know, you're, you're supposed to be the rock and you're supposed to help. How can I help anybody when I don't even know how to help myself?
You need to be able to draw strength from somewhere yourself. And I get that, I get that. I'd like to talk with you more in depth about why I have joy and about where I get my strength from. And it's not just about church, it's about a relationship with the Lord. And that's where I get my strength. And I'm hoping that you too can be able to tap into the love and the joy of Jesus Christ. I'm not here to try to convince you, but I do want to tell you that God is good and he will watch out for you and he will carry you through. So if you want to know more about that, you can join with me again at our church. I can have my pastor call you. They can set you up for counseling, just to get through some of your problems right now. Because right now, I know you're suffering.
I am.
And I'm not here to sell you on any particular thing, but there's a joy for you out there. And let me help you. I'll write down your number and pass it along and you can come and speak to some people who will show you a way to get you through.
Thank you so much. I knew, there was something about you that said, "Go talk to Randy. I think he can help." And you have really made me feel so much better and I thank you. And just keep me in prayer.
Absolutely.
Because my family really is having a hard time and, and so am I. And I thank you so much.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
I look forward to talking with you more and with God on our side, we can get through this.
Thank you, thank you. And thank you for stopping when you wanted to talk to me. Have a great rest of the day.
Thank you.
Alright, take care. Alright, bye-bye.
Alrighty, so that was one of the right ways to evangelize. So I really don't need to go into the details about what I did wrong. That whole scenario was just off. It was totally wrong. Just everything about it was not right. So, but...
The church.
Yeah, the church. But let's talk about what Randy and Jared did with that situation that was right. So one of the things that we talked about last week and the week before was you really can't evangelize correctly without the relationship put in place. So the scenario was Jared and Randy were coworkers. She obviously saw something in Randy that made her feel comfortable to even come to him to say, "I have these problems. I'm struggling. I'm hurt. I'm angry. I don't understand why God did this. I don't understand why this happened to my, my family." So because of how Randy was open, because of how he was approachable, how he was calm, he made it easy for her to come and say, "Can I talk to you?" That's the first way to be able to even get to somebody because just like we said, people don't want to know how much you know until they know how much you care. So what are some other good things that Randy did in the conversation with Jared?
Taking the time to listen.
Okay, take the time to listen. Anything else? He didn't try to force her. Didn't try and force, right? Because one of the things that he said is like, "I'm not trying to convince you. I'm just going to present this to you and you need to make the decision." When we're evangelizing, we need to present Jesus. That's what we're doing. We're presenting him to them and then it's a personal decision whether they accept him or not. Just like when we all came to Christ, it was a personal decision. The preacher or whoever made the invitation, opened the doors of the church and said, "If this is you, come down here and shake my hand." That's the whole thing, is to make a presentation. And it's just like if you go to a restaurant, you order what you want to eat, right? If it's brought to you on a trash can lid, I don't care how good of, how good the food is. If it's brought to you in the wrong way, you're not going to want to accept it. You're going to send it back. The same thing with presenting Jesus. If we present him in the wrong way, how is anyone going to accept him? Because a lot of times with skip one, I presented Jesus on a trash can lid. I talked down to him. I said that he was a drunk. I said that she was a sinner. I said, "Okay, who won't want to come to Jesus after I had made them feel this big?" And how often has, has that happened? You have the negative effect. You're going to hell. I know I'm going to hell. I already know I'm a sinner. Tell me why I need to come to Jesus. Why should I come to accept this Jesus that you're presenting to me? But if you go to a nice restaurant and your meal is presented to you in a, on china, in a nice way, and the meal looks good, then you're going to accept it. You're going to enjoy it. You're going to eat it. That's how we need to present Jesus. Present him in the right way. Present him. It's like even if you go to a, to a church, if as soon as you walk in, you run into one of them mean ushers, okay, your whole spirit then is messed up for the whole service. You can't even hear what the preacher's saying because you think about what happened when I walked in the door. Or if I haven't been in church for a while and the first thing they say, "Ooh, I ain't seen you in forever." Okay, well, alright, so why don't I just go back home again? Because you'd have made me feel bad that I came. So he was open, he was kind, he listened. The other thing I noticed, he didn't rush. He stopped what he was doing and he said, "Okay, what, your, your issue is important to me, so I'm going to not rush Jesus on you." He listened to the issues and as the conversation went on, then he presented.
Tell me how you feel.
Right, so we, we have to be careful to not rush to the finish line. I think we said this last week. Evangelism is not a scorecard. It's not something, you don't have to punch it because you get a free water race when you get to 13th, uh, Christian. It's not about making, it's, it's, it's not about us. And if we make it about us, then we're taking the focus off of Jesus. Because Jesus is supposed to be the focus all the time. It's not about that I got one. It's not about that I invited three and they came. It's not about that I invited Sister so-and-so and she came down that Sunday. One plants, another waters, God gives the increase. We're just supposed to be the conduit. We're supposed to be the process. We're not the whole method. We're not the whole process. We're supposed to be a part of the process. That's part of evangelism. Telling what the Lord has done for you. Showing how the Lord has changed us, how we used to be, the stuff that we used to do, how we used to talk. Because we ain't all been saved all our lives. I know I haven't. I've done some stuff.
I think one, one thing that during me and Randy's conversation is that he didn't feed into the, even though I was saying some negative things, he didn't feed into that. He didn't make my hurt. He didn't open up my wound. And I think sometimes when, when people come to you and they're hurting, sometimes we, we kind of say, "Yeah, I know. That happened to such and such." Right? He didn't feed into that to kind of make it bigger. It was almost as if he heard me, but he didn't hear me because he stayed right on, "I'm sorry to hear that. This is what I've done. This is what you could possibly do. You know, maybe you can come to the church." You know, he didn't even try to make excuses when I even pointed out some things about the church. You know, where some people will try to make excuses for why some people displayed bad behavior. So I, I think he showed a really good example of just staying true to evangelizing. Right? I think that's what we're looking for, right? We're looking for when people are hurt, frustrated, lost, you know, and they're, they're around us. When they do find the courage to come to us, that we don't put fuel, we don't add fuel, we don't try to justify. We listen, we offer support, we offer suggestions.
Because the whole thing is sometimes we can get into that, "Oh, you went through that. You ain't gonna believe what I went through." And it turns into a, a contest of how much hurt we have been through. And it turns into a sermon contest. And it's like, okay, so you went through death. You went, okay, well, I got touched inappropriately and the pastor did this. Okay, well, that's not why she came to you. You're not trying to add on to her pain. You're trying to make her feel better that she came to you. And she said one word. She said courage. So how many people are going back and forth in, in their head? Should I go to them? Should I not go to them? Should I bother them right now? Should I not bother them right now? When is the best time for me to say something? Should I not say anything at all? So they're going through this struggle in their spirit and in their mind, saying, "Okay, I'm hurting, but I know that they can probably help me. But if there's something that goes off in the midst of the conversation..." You, you basically got 30 seconds when someone comes to you to determine whether they're gonna keep talking, whether they're gonna get up and say, "This was a mistake and I shouldn't have said anything at all." So we have to make sure that we're saying the right thing and everything we're doing, we're supposed to be directing them to Jesus. If we're not, we're not directing them to ourselves, we're not directing them to our own ministries, we're not directing them to our Bible study, we're not directing them to join the church, we're directing them to the cross. We're directing them to Jesus. If we're not directing them to Jesus, then our motive is wrong. And we have to make sure that our motive is right. Just like Randy taught last week about the purpose of prayer in evangelism. The purpose of prayer is to make sure that you're properly prepared before you even talk to somebody. Like even if you're going to the hospital to pray for somebody, you need to pray before you get there to pray to make sure that your spirit is right because someone is in the hospital needing something and if we come in wrong, that whole situation can go left.
Yeah, one of the things I read was it's not by intellect, but by God's Spirit that people are brought to Christ. So I, I don't think it's a good idea to try to guard somebody with too much information when you're trying to talk with them. I consider that battle all day about this, that, and the other thing.
Ain't nothing worse than someone coming to you with an issue. And they may have been in church before, they may not have been in church before, but all you give them is a mouthful of scriptures.
I really felt like he met me where I was. I didn't feel like he was talking over me because there was a couple of things that I said that he could have hit me with some scripture, right? But he didn't because that would have been, that would have been too much for me.
Right. And, and, and it's nothing wrong with, with giving scripture, but don't let every other sentence be John 3:16 and Psalm 23 and Psalm 100. Okay, what are you, are, is, is this Bible study or are you, or, or are you trying to help me with my situation? Are you trying to show me how much that, that scripture that, that you know? Or are you really listening to me to help me, to direct me to Jesus? I, I can go through the Bible myself and I can come back and ask you questions, but if the first thing that you do is just dump information on somebody...
And I, and I think too, we also need to be mindful if a person is in an ex, in a escalated state. Right? So if I was saying, "I felt like I wanted to harm myself, I wanted to harm someone." So those are other flags that we need to be listening for so that we know what action we need to take. Because at that moment, it wouldn't be, "I want to see, can you come to church on Sunday? Is, can I get some phone number? You know, can you stay here, you know, and try to see if you can call 911 for that person?" Like you really have to kind of assess where that person is. But anytime you hear someone talking about hurting themselves or others, that is one of the flags that says, "Stay right here. I need to get you some..."
Some help.
Medical help.
Right.
Especially what I wanted to try to do is to make sure you had the opportunity to express what you were feeling and express what you're thinking.
Yes.
Right, and that's the other thing that we have to be careful of. We're, we're, we're not the end-all be-all. If you know that someone needs help, find them help. That help may not be you. Like we, we like to take on more than, than we need to take on with certain people. Like they'll, they'll come to you with a situation and then we feel like that we gotta solve the problem and we turn into Dr. Phil and Oprah and everything else and now your, their, their, their issues are now your issues and you wonder why you all tired and stressed out because they projected all their pain onto you and you're like, "You ain't built for this." That's not your assignment. And that's the one thing that we have to be, be careful of, is accepting assignments that God did not send to be an assignment. You might be part of the process, but you're not the, they're not the assignment. So that's another reason where prayer comes in. You need to pray and say, "Okay, how far do I need to go with this situation?" Because you might not be it. You, you just, just like Randy said, Randy said, "I can refer you to my pastor. He does counseling." Okay, so Randy started the process and he gave it to somebody that's more qualified because a lot of times we be trying to give advice.
Or I've read this, or I've heard this.
I've read this and...
Or watched his YouTube video.
Listen, it ain't all, I say this all the time. It's not about what you know. It's about being able to comprehend what you know. I could have a whole lot of book smarts, but if I can't explain it, I'm gonna mess you up trying to explain it. The worst person is someone that can take one scripture and try to run that scripture with everything that they got. You can mess somebody up not knowing the context and the content of what you're trying to tell somebody. Like you up there telling, telling a story about Judas hugging themselves and then you up there told up the whole, you even tore up the whole context and then they're like, "Alright, well, I guess I might as well just go ahead and hang myself." Because I ain't no good, no way. Like you just messed somebody up. So those were the two ways to evangelize the right way and evangelize in the wrong way. Yeah, it's definitely a lane to be in. What time? We at, we at 7:30? Okay, so let's kind of recap on what we talked about the past couple of weeks. So we talked about, we asked the question, "Is everyone a evangelist?" Yes, in a way. A lot of times we get tied up with titles. Like, you don't have to be a quote-unquote evangelist that preaches in the pulpit. Is everyone a minister? In a way, yeah. Because think about it, in the Bible, when people encounter Jesus, after they had the encounter, they went and told somebody else. As a licensed minister, when I get behind the pulpit, that's what I'm doing. I'm in, I'm telling somebody else about Jesus. So you're a deacon, you're a trustee, you're a minister. But if you tell somebody about Jesus... But if you tell somebody about Jesus, it doesn't matter what your title is. It's just the fact that you're telling about how good Jesus is. You're telling his story. So let's recap on Matthew twenty-eight nineteen through twenty. And this is when Jesus sent out his disciples. This is called the Great Commission. And Jesus told them, go therefore and make disciples of all the nations, baptizing them in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Teaching them to observe all things that I have commanded you, and lo, I am with you always, even to the end of the age. So basically what Jesus was telling them was, take me, give me, give me to everybody else. And make more of you. That's, that's the crux of that whole scripture. Take me, present me to everybody else, and make more of you. That's the Great Commission. That's what he's telling us to do. Then jump over to John three sixteen. And seventeen. We hear about this all the time. If you've been in church any amount of time, you have heard this more than once. For God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son to whoever believes in him should not perish but have everlasting life. Seventeen says, for God did not send his son into the world to condemn the world, but that the world through him might be saved. A lot of times when people evangelize, they give John three sixteen. God loves you so much that he gave his only son for you so that you can have life everlasting, period. They don't go to three seventeen, then they talk about their lifestyle, and they talk about what they doing wrong, and they talk about how much of a sinner they are. So you almost had them. You almost had them. But then you lost them because they. When, when we was out there sending, we knew what we was doing. We knew what we was doing. I don't need you to put me on a spotlight telling me that I'm wrong. Jesus didn't come to the world to condemn the world. It's not our job to pinpoint what they're doing wrong. It's our job to love them to the point that we point them to Jesus and let Jesus fix them. When you do laundry, you don't put clean clothes in the wash machine. You put dirty clothes in the wash machine. We all been dirty one time or another. Jesus is is the spin cycle. He wants to clean us up. It's not our job to clean them up. It's our job to take them to the laundromat. This is the laundromat. Any questions, any comments?
Yeah, I just think, you know, it's important to reiterate those four things about how you go about it.
Yeah. So we talked about this last week, ways to draw people to God. You got people that are going through stuff. Everyone is going through something. We either in something, or we just came out of something, or we about to go into something. Everybody, even with this pandemic, everybody been, has been hurting, they went through some stuff. Money, health, family, people that lost a whole lot of family over the past couple years. So there's a whole lot of grieving going on. We have to be careful to make sure that we're talking to people the right way. Like, you don't know, people have triggers. The smallest thing can set somebody off. The smallest thing, people. Everybody comes to church for a reason. Somebody comes because it's what they do on Sundays. Honest, that that's, that's what some people come for, cause that's what they do on Sunday morning. They get up and go to church, cause that's what they were taught growing up. But you got other people like us. That come because we need something, because all through the week, we went through all this hell and all this struggle and all this hurt. And we need something that's gonna keep us going until Wednesday, or keep us going until next Sunday. And we need to hear what God is telling us for our hurting souls. We have to be careful how we greet people, how we love on people. Sister Elba was here the first week, and she said, that's one of the reasons why she is a doorkeeper. Cause she's going to make sure that anyone that comes in these doors are going to feel the love that she has. We don't know what people are going through. We don't know what people are going back. Home too, they might be in a real bad situation. Some people might not have felt love all their lives, and the only time they get a hug is when they come to church on Sunday morning. That might be the only time they get positive physical touch. Cause they might go home and they have negative physical touch. We don't, we don't know what people are going through, so when they come through these doors, we need to make sure. That we're just loving on people. Be nice. It's not that difficult. We can be nice with our friends, but some people are mean as rattlesnakes. Professional cussers will cuss you out in a minute. Then can't smile for nothing. You don't even know what their teeth look like, cause they don't smile. But you got people coming in, you got the hurting and the grieving. You have the youth and the seniors. Two groups that are continually forgotten about. Cause the youth, you know that we hurting growing up, stay in a child's place. Don't say nothing, so you just will sit there and 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 listen. What am I listening to? Cause all I hear y'all doing is gossiping. The seniors, they feel that they're not useful anymore. That because they're at a certain age, or they're walking with a cane or something, that they can't be useful. You're still useful. You still have value. Those who were hurt by the church, that's a big group. Church hurt is like major, like we, some of us have have ran into some bad church people. Some bad pastors, some bad deacons, some bad trustees, and that made us say, you know what, I could do better in the street.
And I, and I think we should, we should talk about that, you know, there are things that happen in church. And the thing is that we we don't hide behind them. We don't justify them. We work towards correcting them. Alright, it's when you don't talk about it, but everybody in the street is talking about it, but then we don't wanna talk about it, right? We need to talk about it.
Everything be on church, churchfunny.com. Like, I I honestly, church is the funniest place in the world. The stuff you see that happen in church is hilarious sometimes, like, I can't believe that nigga said that. Or sister shouting and she run right into the pulpit, like, you you see some funny stuff. But on the flip side of it, when something's real serious. Why can't we talk about the stuff here? Why can't we resolve it here? Why can't it be discussed here? Like, why are certain topics taboo? Like, we don't wanna, we we, we want people to come to Christ, but we don't wanna talk about the issues. How can we be healed unless we talk about the issues? If you go to a doctor, you got something going on in in your body, they have certain questions that they gonna ask you. What happened? How'd it happen? Are you able to stop it from happening a, 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 for a, um, for a second time? What are you doing that's causing this to happen? The church should be the same thing. What happened? How'd it happen? Can we resolve this? But don't nobody wanna talk about anything, cause they don't, cause I don't want nobody in my business. Okay, well, how can you get healed if you keep going back to the thing that broke you in the first place?
But I feel like one thing for me, you know, it's about accountability.
That's a big word that that people run from.
Right, and so when I say to you, this is who I am, and I'm presenting myself to you. I'm also presenting myself to you to say, hey, if you see I'm I'm stepping out of line. It's a way to come and talk to me about what you're seeing, or what you may be be observing about me, right? Because sometimes people don't know that they may have said something that offended somebody. Or, you know, sometimes people may have, sometimes there's a misunderstanding. You may have thought I didn't speak to you because, you know, I don't like you anymore, when I might have been rushing out to go and do something. But it's when you don't say something, when you don't feel comfortable uh to have that conversation about what you're seeing. Um, that's when you get to, hey, I haven't seen that person in six months, right? Now they at a whole nother church. Social media, and you're like, I didn't even know that happened.
Communication.
Yes.
I I've had that happen to me. Someone said, I was over there at the hospital, and you walked right by me and didn't speak. I said, it was because I. I said, the next time I do that, you see me coming by and stick your foot out and trip me, I won't be mad.
But even nowadays, even with that, with everyone wearing masks, you don't know who's who. So if I didn't speak to you, cause I didn't recognize you. Like, it it wasn't that I was being ignorant, I I, or I might have been so deep in thought. That I just didn't see you, but communication, accountability, just.
Cause if they hadn't, then that would have been hard feelings based on something that wasn't true.
And I, and I think if you look at evangelism, you can look at it from a another angle, right? Sometimes it's, 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 it's using that method to turn a negative situation into a positive, right? Because it's a lot of things that go on at the church, and you know, we not, we 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 not hiding, right? But when we get the opportunity like this, to say, hey, do you have any experiences, or are you noticing something? Let's talk about it, because that's, that's what we're supposed to do, and we work on, how do we heal? How do, how do we become more transparent? Because you don't want, we don't want people coming to church just to be coming to church. Right? Or people coming to church and they having a great time, and something happens, and then they're gone. And they never felt like it was anybody in the church that they could talk to about what they experienced.
Communication is a common denominator. You can't evangelize unless you communicate. How do you communicate them? Cause sometimes we, we come off rough, we come off wrong. Like, just like I said, like, if you know you're not having, if you know you're not having a good day. Tell somebody, you know what, I'm not having a good day right now. I'm gonna be real with you, like, I didn't need to be by myself over here in the corner. Like, but just don't assume that they don't like you or something, or if you having a bad day. Don't try to evangelize somebody. Don't. Go on, pray, take that.
Or don't be a usher that Sunday.
Or don't, don't be a, see, but, but that's the whole thing. We have to be able to be open and honest enough to say where we are that day. If I come in here, and it's not my Sunday to preach. When Benji's giving out the assignments, if my spirit is off, say, don't have me pray this morning. Or I just need a break, let me receive today. Like, because we can get up there or do something, and we set somebody off on the wrong path because our spirit is off. We ain't always at the mountaintop. We we, we don't always have a good day, and it's okay. But don't project that onto somebody else. So how do we draw this group of people to God and those that are going through? Be nice. It's just that simple. Be nice.
I I think that's important because sometimes it's about your mindset. And and if your mindset is that, you know, somebody may not see the love of Christ today unless they see it in you.
You might be the only sinner that they ever hear. They might come to church and hear nothing the pastor said, but they, but they, but they're watching you. Especially if they know that you go to church. Especially if they know you go to church. They're watching everything you do. They watch how you talk to people, they watch how you interact with folk. They watch how you walk, they they watch how you drive. There's this thing I saw. This, this dude was driving, cutting in and out of traffic. Had bumper sticker that said, honk if you love Jesus, right? And had one of the other Christian things on the back of the car. Then he flipped somebody off. Cop pulled him over. He's like, what you pulled me over for? I said, cause I saw your license plate and everything that said honk if you love Jesus, so the car had to be stolen, because you can't be a Christian. Because when you driving and how you're acting is not. But people watch what you do, and especially if you have all of that, all all the bumper stickers and the. Um, God is dope shirts and you wearing your faith, but you wearing God is dope to the strip club. Like, come on. Make it make sense. One of these things is not like the other. This don't make sense right now. The other thing, be approachable. Just be approachable. Like, if someone comes up to you, like. Make them want to be able to talk to you. Like, some of us can look so mean sometimes. Like, okay, I'm I'm not talking to them. But they wanna talk about Jesus all the time, and post all the scriptures and, if you love God, send us to ten friends, you gonna be dust.
You wanna walk up to somebody that's got stink face.
The other way, converse without judgment. That's the big thing, like, we all been through stuff. Like, you not judge, you not judge, you not jury, you not Judge Mathis, you not Judge Judy. You surely ain't God. Talk to them. Be open for what they wanna talk to, and if it's confidential, keep it confidential. Unless it's going to hurt them, then you escalated. But if it's confidential, maintain your confidence. And then the final way, show compassion. Be compassionate. Jesus was compassionate. When he met with the woman at the well. He told her what she did, but he didn't treat her like she was dirt on his sandals. He said, I know that you have five husbands, and blah, 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 and, and then she went running. This man told me everything that I did. So she went from a sinner to an evangelist with one interaction with Jesus. Can people do that with us? In one interaction with us, if we're showing Jesus, can there be a change? In their situation, can it be a change in their accountants? Can, can it just be a change? Can you be the positive change in your life and someone else's life? But how are we gonna do that? Present Jesus, make more of you.
I used to be the walking Monday morning billboard. Soon as, soon as I got to church on, on, and got to work on Monday, the first thing they would say is, what did you learn in church yesterday?
To evangelize.
And I, I somewhat as I would be on fire, right? Cause I remember, and that was, that was great, because I could come in and I would be like, let me tell you what Pastor said to say, right? And I would just go into, and I wasn't going into scripture or anything, I was telling the story. Because that, that was how I was, I was getting it. I, he told me a story, and now I'm gonna go and tell some people the story that somebody told me, right? I didn't realize what was happening at the time, right? But people were coming and look for me on Mondays. What did I learn? Because I was all animated, right? Sometimes I got emotional. But I was, I was sharing, but was sharing with me. Um, and I think it's just that easy sometimes. It is, when something good happens to you, right?
It's just like going to a good, to a, at a good restaurant, you saw a good movie, you gonna tell somebody about it. If we stand up there in church on Sunday and say, Jesus has been so good to me, but we don't tell nobody about it, then what are we doing? You can't take, take, take without being able to give. We see so often pictures of Jesus with his arms open, his hands open. God gave his only son so that we could give him to somebody else, so that they could have what we have. Christianity is not about being selfish. It's about sharing the good news that we got. Present me, make more of you. One plant, another waters, God gives the increase. If y'all remember, nothing else that I said these, these three weeks that Randy said too. Present God, make more of you. Plant, water, but he gets the increase, and he gets the glory, because it's all about him anyway. Be nice, be approachable, be loving, don't be judgmental. If we ever get the basics right, how much more would our churches be effective? How much more would our communities be impacted? If we ever get it right, but we take the simple things and make them so difficult? How is sharing the love of God difficult? We make it too hard. Live your life the way that he's calling you to live it, and be an example. That's evangelism. You ain't even gotta open your mouth to evangelize. Be an example. Smile for somebody. Pray for somebody. Give somebody an authentic handshake. Give them a authentic hug. You gotta be careful now with COVID. But if you know that you vaxxed in, and, uh, they, they're vaxxed, like, do it, but we gotta stop making the simple things difficult. Jesus made it easy. He said, love me and tell others about me. That's the crux of evangelism. Love Christ and tell others about what he's done for you. It's just that simple. And on that note, I'm going to close. This has been three weeks of evangelism. I hope y'all got something out of it. We'll be back in two weeks with another topic. I don't know what that's gonna be yet, but you guys will find out. And I'm going to ask Deacon Watley if he will close us out in prayer.
Lord, Heavenly Father, I simply wanna say thank you. Thank you for blessing us with today's lesson, Lord God, that we can take it and apply it in our lives, Lord God. Lord God, we simply wanna say thank you for giving us the opportunity to, to, to sharpen our minds, Lord God, and our faith, Lord God, to allow us to make the most appropriate decisions in life, Lord God. Allow us to be a beacon to our community, so therefore we can go out and show the way of our truth and savings, Jesus Christ, and how he blessed us, Lord God, by living truly according to the word, Lord God. Thank you so much for allowing Minister Clayton to, to give us direction, and allowing us as Christians to strengthen our faith, Lord God, as iron sharpens iron, Lord God. Thank you so much for blessing us each and every day, so therefore we can be a minister, a minister to others, Lord God. Lord God, I simply wanna ask you for your travel and grace and mercy. Allow us to take the word and apply it in our lives and teach our family, Lord God, so therefore we can come in Sunday morning stronger than we were yesterday, Lord God. Simply wanna say thank you once again for creating all of us in your image. Guide us, lead us, Lord God. Protect our families, protect our home, protect our community, protect the Christian church and church, the Lord God. And Lord God, we simply continuously ask you to bless us with more members, Lord God, so therefore we can continue to spread the gospel to the, the whole community, Lord God. Thank you so much for allowing us to be an example of your true word, Lord God. All these things we ask in Jesus' name. May we all say amen, amen, and amen.
Have a good night, everybody.